Speaking of shows, I think it's time to do it. Our show's seven o'clock, so ready to go. I'll rise and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have our first Monday on a normal Monday of the month. We've survived what we had in October and November were Mondays that happen to be Columbus Day and Veterans Day celebrations, so we're back to the true second Monday of the month, December 10th. Welcome, everybody. And we've got a fairly good agenda ahead of us here. We'll get started on it. Based on what November presented, we, with the timeline, believe it or not, we only have one set of minutes for approval in November because of the late November meeting. You might remember we put some workshop and special meetings for approval at the November 19th meeting, leaving us with just the November 19th meeting to review for our tour tonight. I went through it and made some edits and corrections. And anybody else have any other additions, alterations, or corrections? They've been circulated, so hearing none, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks. We'll move to some financial world here. I'll read over the Treasury report, and Cindy can chime in with any input or insight. But right now, as of the 10th of December, we show in the general fund, $544,258; water fund, $199,949; trust and agency, $34,323; materials management, $1,143.08; petty cash, $44; Village Green, $4,454; hardscrabble, $6,642; health insurance, $4,115; sewer fund, $20,000; capital project, zero. As far as expenses this month, in general fund, we will be spending $84,957.39; water fund, $14,204.68; trust and agency, $34,323; and materials management, $2,413.48. So the voucher packs are being reviewed, but it looks like a relatively thin month voucher-wise, and therefore dollar-wise as well. Those numbers are not too significant this month. Later on, we'll talk about when we're in regular business, the one line there, the materials management fund, and I'll explain a little bit where we get to regular business. I think we have to look at and do a few things there, but we can get into details on that later. Is there anybody with a question or anything about the Treasurer's presentation? I'd entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's report for this month.
Is that good?
I heard a second. Do I have a move? Anybody moving to do it? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see. Let me just set something up on my screens here, too. What we can do is move to the police report. We have in your packets the November details. And as far as incidents, the gross count, 389; breakout is 233 in a village, 150 in a town, and six in a village of Tivoli. Tickets issued were 73. The breakout is 56 in a village and 17 in a town. Arrests were 28. Village portion, that was 16, and the town was 12.
How do we get this thing where we roll up into Tivoli? Is that, it starts somewhere else and ends up in Tivoli? Is that how that shakes? Or?
Look at the back. I think I remember, they used to give us a page for Tivoli. I don't see a separate. Does anybody? Let's see. There it is, the final, final, the back page of the stapled reports there. Looks like some disorderly conduct, a medical emergency, a noise complaint, and a patrol advisory. I'm not sure what a patrol advisory is. And to answer your question, Jay, I don't know what, the first category is assist other agency on the top there.
Yeah, I can get that one. That's easy, you know, some sort of mutual aid thing, so sure.
But I don't know how the others...
You know, the noise complaint, kind of.
Yeah, November 6th. I don't think they all step off the top category, assist other agency, I mean, looking at it. It looks like they each have their own section there. But they are, you know, an entity within a town. I don't know if when a call comes in, there's nobody else reporting or able to respond. But we could, do you want to ask?
Yeah, I mean, I would just...
Because we don't, as a rule, we don't patrol there. It's just...
And it's, you know, the village paying for that. And I mean, I guess, I guess we'd had this discussion before, that it would appear that when, say, maybe they respond up there, they're not here, you know?
Well, I would, I would think if we looked at a calendar, these should be just town shift days. They wouldn't be leaving here to go to Tivoli unless it was something pretty, maybe a medical emergency like that one. But, yeah, I'd be curious. I'm not even sure what a patrol advisory is. If you want, if you're in, later in the week, we could talk to the Sergeant.
Sure.
As far as fire report, we'll talk about that in regular business, too. I don't see that we have this month's run sheet from them, and sometimes they come in a little bit later. We'll see what happens with that. I think we'll move ahead, and Mr. Trustee Trapp, you were warming up over there.
Yes, I'm...
Planning and zoning?
I'm ready. Let's see here. It's like a pretty, pretty active month. We had 12 building permits issued. Basically, one on either side of me, it would appear.
On your street, you mean?
Yeah, on Fraley Street. One, one way, one the other way.
Were they building fences or what?
Yeah, they're, we're going to add on and connect three houses together.
Okay. Didn't get my joke.
12 building permits issued and two certificates of occupancy issued. Let's see, certificate of compliance, two municipal searches. One was conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work orders, no court appearances. Fire inspections, let's see, there were a number of them, and they, a couple of complaints, and they both were remedied, one on Fraley, one on Garden. And anybody interested, the report is available. Planning board had an agenda November 8th, one site plan, 7562 North Broadway. Public hearing was set, and application table till the December 13th meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals, November 15. Minutes, that's right, you guys were upstairs, right, doing that thing? Yep, and the minutes were approved, and I think that was their activity. The, it looked like a pretty good month for November. $2,895 was taken in. That's, that's good. It kind of shows that those fee changes that we made are, you know, are kind of, kind of working. And I guess we'll, are we going to chat about the fire company a little later, a couple of things? Okay, I'll just hang on to that then until we get there. I think that'd be enough for me.
Okay, good. You know, on the, like Jay said, it looks like the revenue was just shy of $3,000, but some fire inspections in there, because we do see our fire inspector is making the rounds, doing his annual and tri-annual different things. Thank you, Jay.
Got you.
We could move to trustee Nars. Are you ready to work a little bit?
I did not go to Friday Night Lights, but you did. I saw pictures of you on social media.
Oh, really? Oh, no.
I did.
Have they come out?
They're lovely.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, Friday Night Lights is a group run by some of our local merchants, and they did Candy Cane Lane last Friday with a, you want to say anything about it?
Sure.
Apparently, because I wasn't there, my daughter had a concert.
Yeah, it was actually really fun. They did that, you said Candy Cane Lane, but it was essentially lit up a lot of commercial vehicles, including our fire, one of our fire trucks. And I thought it was a really good turnout. It was a great night. It wasn't snowing, it wasn't raining. And we had a kind of interesting story. We might have heard it before, but one of our residents who sits on our zoning board of appeals had a, wanted to do a little landscaping in his backyard, and he had a tree that he planted as a sprig, I think 20 years ago, and it was now growing up against his deck and so forth. He was willing to donate it for a holiday tree somewhere in the village. So we looked at it, it was perfectly shaped, perfect size for where it is.
That's a beautiful tree over there.
Yeah. So I went in his backyard and looked, and then had the highway guys go and look to see if they could get it out. But I thought, well, they were afraid they were going to tear up his lawn. As always, highway guys like to use a lot of heavy equipment, yeah. So Dave Tree actually volunteered to put a little hoist in there, so when they cut it, they could just take it out. And our PD blocked some traffic, and Baywright's got this planter all set and hooked some cables, and it worked perfectly. And it was the headquarters of our normal tree lighting. We've migrated over the years, right, Jen? We used to do it at Key Bank, we've done it up at Memorial Park. I think those were our two choices. But this was nice, it was right in the village center. We put some cones in the street, and it was a nice crowd. And Santa was there, and earlier in the day, we had some menorah prayers and sort of things like that. So we had, we're hitting a lot of bases, and, but Santa was awesome. He gets here at Red Hook early, and the kids all loved it. And it was, we reminded everybody that the shop local is not just a saying, it's really important, you know, to keep these stores and these restaurants alive and vibrant. We need it, that people know that that's how you do it, is you support them. You don't just walk around. So it was really great, and I'm glad to hear it's up on social media, but it was what we try to do, have fun things for our residents and keep our businesses going, so it's real good.
All right. Because we are going to talk about materials management, I'm going to work backwards on this report here. First, we're going to be holding our annual electronic waste event Saturday, January 19th, from 8 to 12 at the Town Recycling Center. allowable e-waste includes televisions, monitors, computers, keyboards, cables, power cords. Once again, I'd cut and pasted, and I never fixed. It says power cords on my... Telephones, fax machines, scanners, printers, cell phones, VCR, DVD players, digital music players, digital converter boxes, cable, satellite receivers, electronic and video game consoles. There will be a $20 charge for old televisions. We have limited home pickup available. Call either the Village Hall or the Town Hall for details. This event is held in conjunction with the Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement, which provides the volunteers for the day. Working, again, working backwards, for the month of November, we had 10.49 tons of garbage and 4.59 tons of single stream recycling, for which we are now being charged $77.16 a ton. We had four fluorescent light bulbs and .36 tons of newspaper, for which we're not charged. We paid out $1,444.24 in charges, and over a two-week period, sold $928.50. Reminder, due to global issues, our local recycling has changed. Starting January 1st, we're going to need to go back to a schedule for recycling. A calendar was sent out with a newsletter and water bill. It's bright pink. It's on my refrigerator as we speak. Hopefully, it's on everybody else's. In general, cardboard will be the first pickup of the month, paper the third Monday of the month, with commingled glass, metal, and plastic on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So it's going to take some getting used to, I'm sure, and it's going to be a drag, but we can't keep going at $77.16 a ton for stuff that used to be free, so, there you have it.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to highlight, we'll talk more later in regular business, too, but the regular household garbage, which is 10.49 tons, historically, and that's always been about $103 a ton. Recycling used to be $0 a ton. Now it's almost as expensive as regular garbage. So we, we're going to recommend some steps later that we'll talk about and possibly act on tonight. And so you talked about that, and what else we up to? I guess we'll take a little break with our celebration.
Yeah, the Elmendorf will do their soup night and their chili night. I know Team Nora is talking about doing a fundraiser that we've kind of talked about, doing like a middle of, dead of winter, get out of your house kind of thing.
Yeah.
So they're working on that, and our next thing, I guess, would probably be the egg, the egg roll.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you, Jen. Let's see, how's the water division down there? Mr. Lang, you ready to work?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll give you the floor.
So the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facility's monthly report here, during the month of November, the water treatment facility treated 6,355,000 total gallons, which is an average of 211,800 gallons a day. That's a little up from last month, but in, in keeping with basically a year ago, we also sent out three bacteriological samples to Smith Environmental Labs, and they all came back absent for those bacteria that we're testing for. And during the month, the water treatment plant used 55 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, so that's an average daily use of 1.83 gallons per day. Otherwise, there's a handful of outstanding issues. Apparently, we're still having issues with the SCADA system.
Which one?
SCADA, okay, yeah. That's been going on for a while.
Yeah, put a little arrow, you might want to just talk about, in the SCADA system, paragraph, it starts out, on November 27, the facility received its DOH inspection, and that was related to me. The major finding were, a couple of our wells, they found, the case, the casing that had houses were unlocked, so that was a pretty easy fix. And then they all saw, recommending that we pick up, we have a lead operator, but they'd like us to have a secondary operator with a grade C certification. Right now, our guy has agreed, he's a distribution, which I guess I think is a D, but he's not fully completed his, the practical side. He's taken the book and the tests and those parts, but he needs to do a few things. So in the interim, I've asked VRI to help us with the backup, grade C certified guy, so it's, you might see a different route, a different rate there from them. But they are still working, Charlie, since we're on the Friday meetings, they are, CT Mail is working with everybody to get that elevated tank decommissioned. We keep pushing them for a date, and it seems like it's getting closer. I don't know if you have a good feel for rentals with the meetings, but we're on them pretty heavily to get it done. Anything else from your world there, Charles?
No, although, I mean, do you want to just mention that this, looking into energy efficiency here in Village Hall?
Yeah, I circulated something today. Yeah, we could probably, why don't we add it to the regular business part? Did you all have, like, I circulated something, I think, digitally a couple hours ago, from a consultant to Central Hudson. Did that come out to everybody? Did you see that in your packets? I wasn't quite, hadn't quite spent enough time on it to really interpret it, but it was, I thought we'd talk about it a little bit and see. But we could, let's add that to when we're in regular session. LED lights. Okay. Anything else, though?
Nope.
Mr. Brent, you are ready to do your part?
I am ready. Start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, $2,666.50. Shaky contractual, $2,350 in the Village Green checking account. Just want to check that. Numbers here. You said these, $4,454.92. I got a different number.
Just different pennies, or what do you mean?
No, about $100 difference.
Four, five?
This is...
Yep. The Village Green Committee met on November 9th in the Village Building, and we discussed, actually, we recapped the November 3rd Fall Planting Day, and how to adjust procedures, schedules, and teams, et cetera, for the next planting day. And we also discussed creating a list of available trees based on size and location, such as what kind of trees would be best under power lines, open fields, proximity to streets, et cetera. Just kind of gearing up, again, slowly for spring planting. And the 2018 Tree City USA application was submitted on December 2nd, and we'd like to thank Village Green Committee Officer Michael Johnson for preparing, completing, and submitting this year's application, and it's always fun to do those applications. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report, leaf pickup continues through the fall. It will end on December the 14th, which is this Friday coming up. The Highway Department will not pick up leaves that are mixed with brush due to possible equipment damage, and they will not be picking up brush. It's just leaves at this point. So this will be it come Friday for leaves until spring, and hopefully, everyone has theirs taken care of. The Village's snow ordinance is currently in effect through March 31st. There's no parking is permitted on Village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And on New York State highways, that'd be Market Street and Broadway, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. When snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agency. And all costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. Also aligned with snow, hopefully, we'll keep that at bay as long as we can. The owner and/or occupant of every building lot or lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department may remove snow and ice left unclaimed at a cost of $2 per linear foot. And again, this isn't a service, this is meant to be a penalty. We've had people call up in the past, willing to pay $2 a linear foot to have our Highway Department remove that. They will not. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received by the village on November 8th for the amount of $385. Total revenue generated in this fiscal year is $1,701.50. Since inception of the scrap metal program in September of 2007, $27,699.67 has been generated. And the proceeds from this go to purchase tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water Materials Management. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Highway Department or the Village Clerk's Office, and the Highway Department personnel will pick up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force monthly report. Start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on November 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 30th in the Red Hook Village Building. The synopsis of the determination finding statements were sent via certified mail to four property owners with a total of six properties during the week of November 12th. The determination finding statement, along with the names of the property owners who have not returned signed easements, were published in the village's official newspaper, which is the Daily Freeman, on November 9th and 10th. Property owners have 30 days, which is as of today, to challenge the public purpose of the project. 129 of the 135 easements have been collected and submitted to Dutchess County Clerk's Office. The property owners who have not submitted signed and authorized easements include Pat Holden and Nabeel Ayew of Red Hook Inn, Michael Luwak of Charlie O's, Vincent Zitz of Sitco and Arvind Buckykun. Eminent domain proceedings have begun on the six remaining properties. The intent of eminent domain is not to take the entire property and buildings, but only the 10-foot right-of-ways and temporary construction easements. Appraisals of the six remaining properties have been initiated, and initial offering will be prepared. The amounts to obtain the right-of-ways and easements will be forwarded with an initial offering to the property owners who have not submitted their easements. The appraisals will be coordinated by Rottenhausen Shaw LLP. Work is nearing completion on obtaining responses and approvals of the final documents from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, and Dutchess County Department of Health. Once the initial offerings have been filed with the courts, final documents will be completed for review and approval. Once all regulatory and funding agency documents have been approved, construction bid proceedings can begin, and we're hoping that a February 2019 date, we can go and advertise bid documents for the construction of the Red Hook Sewer Project. So we still have some work and some confirmations that we have to get from USDA. Hopefully, we'll do that on Friday, see if we can move forward on this. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase 2, a meeting and site visit to the Village Pump House and Wellfields took place on November 12th, as Ed had mentioned. I guess you didn't mention that one. To evaluate the system integrator that will lead to the decommission of the elevated water storage tank on Tower Road. Plant IQ, which serves the SCADA system that Charlie was talking about, and controls were installed properly but need to be reprogrammed. Data is currently being collected of low peak usage periods to help with reprogramming efforts. Fernando Dango, who's a VRI employee, also a water operator, and CT Mail are coordinating efforts to complete the work of decommissioning the elevated tank. And then Catherine, Sarah, and Chad Courts, who is the Director of Engineering with CT Mail, met with Ed and myself on December 1st to review the process of decommissioning the elevated tank. On the intermunicipal task force, both Charlie and I represent the Village of Red Hook. The task force met on November 2nd and 9th in the Red Hook Town Hall, and we discussed, as we continued, discuss possible zoning amendments to regulate non-owner occupied short-term rentals in the Town of Red Hook's residential districts. Assistance to the task force has been provided by Michelle Gregg, who is the Red Hook Town Planner, Steve Cole, which is, who is the Red Hook Town Zoning Enforcement Officer, and local motel, hotel, and inn business owners. There were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, or the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Boards, or the Northern Dutchess Alliance. Members of all three of those. On the Community Preservation Fund, the current balance as of November 30th is $1,146,671.63. The Town of Red Hook Local Revitalization Program, or LWRP Working Group, monthly report, I represent the village on that one. The LWRP Working Group met on November 27th at the Red Hook Town Hall, and we reviewed policy and updates and amendments of historic and scenic features, which is Section 2D, which includes scenic areas of statewide significance, architectural sites, structures, features, and archaeological sites, landscape distinction, stone walls, street trees, scenic roads, scenic vistas. And also reviewed policy updates and amendments of transportation, which is Section 2I, which includes highways, roads, and streets, and the analysis of those. And Ed and I were also privileged to meet with students from the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement class, all politics is local, at the Bard College campus on November 27th, and we discussed roles and political affiliations of locally elected officers versus county, state, and federal elected officers. state, and federal elected officers, the challenges and current issues, the role of the public, and methods to engage the public in policy formation, and the impacts of policy from local constituents and stakeholders. And we presented as a case study the Red Hook Village Sewer Project. And that's all I have.
Good. Thank you, Brent.
Has anybody responded to the or challenged the public purpose of the sewer? I was just wondering. And they have thirty days, and today's like the.
The last day.
Right, yeah.
We could double check with Cindy, but as of four P M. today, I didn't see or hear anything, so. All right. I'll move to the regular business component. In your distributions, we have um, a memo of, it's titled agreement on the top of the page, essentially M O A memorandum of understanding type agreement. And I might just show an exhibit here and refresh everybody's memories in a minute. Remember, for the year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we sat with the county a lot and uh, had to prepare a new version of tax cap compliance work, where we had to stay within a cap, but also work with other municipalities and try to figure out some shared service concepts and ways we could take some steps to reduce duplicated services and so forth. And this booklet came out of it. It's all twenty towns, eight villages, and two cities, and the county are in here with different projects that we sat and talked about. And as a board, we talked about some of them. The one that I wanted to work on tonight is um, it's an agreement where we would work with the county. And I separately attached, or I should say, um, there were a bunch of attachments that I stapled separately into your mailboxes. Um, it says Schedule A and B and C. Um, if you look at Schedule C, it lists a bunch of municipalities. And I'm reading from the book itself, but it's not a lot of words here. But the underlying concept, there's an acronym which we like to use, C I T. It stands for Crisis Intervention Training. And the county's been pretty big on figuring out ways to get police agencies to effectively to effectively respond to folks that are having some sort of crisis that might be more with uh, not an underlying criminal situation going on, but just emotional or some psychiatric problems, or even overdose-type situations, where um, the goal would be to identify and intervene and de-escalate the situation in a more community sense instead of a policing off-the-jail sense. And um, the goal would be to take and identify this at onset. And historically, most of the police officers we hire come pretty freshly out of the academy, where they do have the latest, I think psychiatric and psychological treatment, not of themselves, uh, but s- some exposure in courses and so forth. Um, but I thought it'd be better that we could say we're keeping that training ongoing. And the county does push it pretty heavily, and um, it's, I think it's worth us joining in. And it also, we can, we used it in one of our tax shared services cap plans there. And in the book, the projections are that it would save, and I'll explain that in a minute, if if we were to send our own officers to training somewhere, A, could we find it? And B, we'd have to pay somewhere most likely to get it. Whereas what the county will do with these other municipalities is get the training agency to offer it, coordinate it, schedule it, and then we would get some of our, it doesn't pay a hundred percent back of our officer's time to be there. It's a forty-hour course, essentially. And um, they would be able to go take it, and then we would get whatever their hourly rate is, we know what that is, we would get six hundred and twenty-five dollars back for sending an officer down. Um, but like I said, the big goal is to just defuse certain street things. And we see the nightmares on the street in national news where something is really not that bad an event, and things turn south, and you have deadly force and different things can happen. Uh, but this isn't even on that high a level, meaning it's, there's also, you don't want to tie up jail time, hospital and patient time with somebody that just needs to be transported to somewhere else for some more basic treatment or something that's uh, less, less imprisoning or less confining and so forth. So it's um, I think it's worth it. And before we sign anything, I wanted to talk to you about it. We've, I think, heard about C I T over the past couple of years from the county. And if you look at the attachments, um, you can see some of the agencies that are involved. People Inc. is an outside consulting agency to the county. Then there's the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. That's another name for Department of Health. Um, and there's County of Dutchess Sheriff's Office, City Poughkeepsie Police Department, Mid Hudson Addiction Recovery Center, National Alliance on Mental Illness. So as you can see from some of the players, especially the top one and the bottom two, it's designed to facilitate other courses rather than taking up jail beds and hospital beds when to be a better, could be a better opportunity. Um, exhibit or Schedule C shows the munis that agreed to join in. Part of me feels like if we're gonna take the step in the burden of having a police department, we also have to take the uh, concurrent step to make sure we're up to speed on everything. But if you go through city beacons involved, Town of East Fishkill Police, Town of Fishkill, Village of Fishkill, Town of Hyde Park, Village of Millbrook, Village of Milton Police Department, Town of Pine Plains, City Poughkeepsie, Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department, us, Village of Rhinebeck, Village of Wappingers Falls, and then different components of the Sheriff's Office that will be getting training. So in our handbook, like I said, it projected what this would have cost these various agencies to send their folks to it. And it was projected at a hundred and six thousand, five hundred bucks. Um, as far as the projected savings, I misspoke there. That's the projected savings that we would show by sending that number of agencies and people to training. So counsel did look over the agreement. He just wanted us to be aware that, yeah, we would have to schedule our people and get them down there. And they don't go for free. We'd have to pay their, their hourly rate while they're down there. But like I said, I talked with, it's actually coordinated a little bit by Dutchess County Planning, and they would, they refund the flat six hundred and twenty-five dollars per forty-hour course per employee that goes. So um, in the packet, it's relatively short, but it talks about the participating agencies. The acronym of C I T appears a few times. And um, as I view it, what we would do if, if we go further with it tonight, I'd like to uh, you, the course is not currently scheduled. It's not around the corner as far as our officers and the management have time to schedule and get involved, and when to send folks, and how to do it, and how it matches our scheduling and our staffing needs and so forth. So um, in essence, it's not a local law thing. It's just a variation of a contract where we would uh, be agreed to be, be agreeing to being a participant and work with the county and get our people down there.
Is there an expectation of number of people that will participate, say, from the village?
Um, just a minute, Brent. Uh, just get my screen back up here. I meant Jay. I would think eventually we'd like to cycle all our people through it. Um, probably make the most sense to me to start sending management or more senior full-timers and then work our way down through the, through the group. They wouldn't all go at once. I kind of vision, you know, one person at a course, training course session, um, just so we, because we are relatively, we have X number of shifts and X number of staffers, so we can't send a lot of people off at one time. If you look at page four of the agreement, and it gives some of the things I was talking about there, essentially emphasizing treatment rather than incarceration of people suffering from mental illness. And um, a lot of it ties in with a lot of programs of the county, Jay, but I think we would be responsible for our own scheduling and our own decision who goes and what course they, you know, what sequence, what, what month they go to take the course. But that being said, um, I put together a resolution. I'm not sure it hit printed version. Um, I'll read it. We're saying, whereas the Village of Red Hook has a well-trained police department, but always looks to upgrade to maintain the highest skill set, whereas the village looks to share services and control costs for its residents, and whereas the Village of Red Hook made initial steps to join a consortium of county and other police agencies in shared training for crisis intervention training, which will train and ref- refresh officers on methods to identify and de-escalate situations where persons can be diverted from the criminal justice system or inpatient hospitalization to other organizations that can address their needs. And whereas shared training will reduce training expenses for the Village of Red Hook, as detailed in the two thousand and eighteen dash nineteen Dutchess County-wide Shared Services Tax Savings Plan developed in compliance with the New York State Tax Cap Rules. Be resolved that the Village of Red Hook at its December ten, twenty eighteen board meeting has reviewed the agreement after review by council and authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement. Scheduling classes is handled by Dutchess County, and internal schedules will be handled within the Red Hook Police Department. So it goes a little bit of your questionnaire, Jay, but um, one thing you all might remember, when the state came up with this version of shared services this particular year, when we had to make the book, um, there might be in the end a mechanism where the state then reimburses the county and all the players in a separate transaction down the road. But right now, the county at the planning level and the folks that are coordinating the whole program, not just the C I T, it's not totally clear from the state when and if those refunds and rebates would occur. But one, when the state was pushing this down, they were saying that they would take these books and then push something about it. It's a different flavor. Remember, a couple of years ago with the tax cap, we had to show some specific savings line by line, and, and they weren't countywide with all the county agencies, but we were essentially the state's coercing shared services, which is not a bad thing. But the formula, how everybody gets reimbursed is not clear. But the county will be, the six twenty-five I mentioned is not state-related. That's from the county back to us for being in it. I think they hope to then get that money back from the state down the road. But repeating, I think it's a good step. I think we always want to keep our P D on the front end of new developments instead of getting blindsided or on the rear, you know, backside of things. I would offer, I guess we'd want a number from Cindy on the resolution there.
Thirty-one.
Which one, three-one?
Three-one.
I would move that we adopt the resolution thirty-one, which should enable us to sign the memorandum of agreement and um, participate further in the shared service for crisis intervention training. Is there a second?
Aye.
Any other talk or discussion? Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Did I hear?
Copy of that resolution?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Did you vote?
I did.
Okay. Did you vote yes?
I did.
You were so quiet, I didn't hear you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me. Let me clear my desk of that. And what's next? Materials Management, all right. Again, if you would be so kind, maybe dig out Jennifer's report. And um, I'd just like to concentrate on a few things. And I'd like to try to take some steps tonight if we're on the same page. The spreadsheet, looking at it, if we're rounding a few numbers, we budgeted about fifty thousand dollars gross revenue for materials management this year. And like you all know, we do our budget January, February, March, which predates this whole change in world recycling costs and options. So, long story short, we budgeted for our known costs and what we had a history of dealing with, which was essentially a great recycling program with very little cost for the recycling because it's a strong program we had. Single stream came into our world. We thought that was even better, but it became a nightmare. And if you look across, um, in the middle of her pages, her spreadsheet, you can see her single stream tonnage where we're, we're staying in the same, that's our recycling number there, that four and a half to five and a half tons. And that's historically been where we're at the past year or two. Um, but if you look at the costs, in June it was ninety-six dollars and sixty cents. Then it jumped to four hundred, and it's, it's averaging, you know, there's a four hundred and thirty-six dollar a month cost there for just the recycling. What I'm getting at is we never budgeted for those because they never existed. And if you do the math, it's been, I think those add up to about twenty-one hundred dollars. I have a worksheet here myself. And what we had to do at the last um, bill payment time, this is a little policy talk and little accounting talk, but the garbage fund didn't have enough cash from tag sales in it. And the board and the public might know. What we do is we charge when Jen reports the tipping fees and certain things, the fixed costs are in our budget. But we also charge one day, pretty much a week of man time to the garbage program. And we charge as much as we can to, of their benefit and of certain truck maintenance costs. It's never been able to really pay fifty percent of the truck operation costs. But um, the budget we had was designed to that. And quite frankly, we've also seen a drop-off in tonnage hauled. We're seeing that drop down. Um, if you do, right now, according to Jen's sheet, if you look to the tag sale average, we're averaging thirty-four hundred, excuse me, thirty-five hundred dollars a month in tag sales, where our budget projection was, we would have liked to have been hitting forty-one hundred dollars a month. We do see pressure from the private haulers, and I think certain of this year's Bard students aren't using our system either. They tend to be some big users, but it's, it's um, it is dropping off. But thirty-five hundred, I think, times twelve is what, thirty-eight thousand in that range. Um, so we're, we're having a shortfall there. But the biggest kicker right now has been that unplanned hit on a charge for the recycling. Now, we know December thirty-one, the first time we pick up, where the public's been advised and we'll be going back to commingle, that'll take that cost, the recycling cost, go back to zero. But we've incurred that twenty-one hundred or so already, and we had to take what we call a due-to-do-from from General Fund. It's where we essentially borrow for garbage from General. But it's not a free loan. We have to go back and repay that. And technically, we have to repay it by the end of the fiscal year we're in. Um, so what I'm thinking we need to talk about and move on is, right now, small tags are two seventy-five a tag, large tags are five fifty. I was doing some math. I think we need to look at going to three dollars for small tags and then six dollars for the big tags. That's essentially a nine percent increase. Um, we never like to do it, and we try to keep it as low as we can. But this recycling charge just came out of nowhere, and we, there's not enough surplus in the garbage fund. Like we know, we built fund balance and general fund, but garbage fund is a separate enterprise fund the way we do the bookkeeping. So it can't really just share in the fund balance. Otherwise, it'd be a simple fix. We'd just take twenty-one hundred from fund balance. But um, the way we have it for bookkeeping is an enterprise fund. So um, if, if we make that difference up, the nine percent difference, call it ten, it'd be about three hundred and fifty dollars a month on average sales. So it would pretty much equal what we're, we took as a due-to-do-from. But um, it's not gonna cure it because we're just paying another, let's see, Jennifer's reporting November's um, costs. We're gonna have some in December that we're still in. You know, in hindsight, we probably could have flipped from single stream to commingled earlier, but it becomes a problem. How do you advise the public and get it out in a timely newsletter where it all works? I think we would have had a hodgepodge of, I think we still would have been paying for non-commingled.
I mean, I was getting the feeling we're still gonna have.
Yeah, might, that might be true, yeah.
A learning curve.
Hmm. And the inside staff, we used to be, what, two fifty and five up until July twenty seventeen, I think Jen said, right? We like to keep it at twice, in other words, small tag, half of a big tag price, because it makes sense both selling them wise and size of garbage bag wise and so forth. Uh, I still think, Jen and I were talking about a little bit over the weekend, living in a village, people do have access to the big guys. They pay thirty-seven fifty a month for the big guys, you know?
Well, and surely that's gonna be changing with the changing.
I don't think, yeah, I agree. This is a global thing. This is.
Do we know anything about how the private haulers are adjusting their rates?
Well, I called somebody I know over the weekend that uses them, and they're getting charged in at four dollars a month for the recycling issue. They weren't quite sure. They're looking at their bill for me. I didn't get the bill, but.
I mean, are they gonna have to?
They're gonna have to separate or.
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to dump it all in one bucket.
Right. Uh, they're in the same boat we are.
Unless they're just gonna chuck it all in the same garbage bin and not recycle.
Could be, which is worse for the planet. Um, because what's happening is the recycling price was approaching the tonnage. Because what's happening is the recycling price was approaching the tonnage, you know, one oh three is not that different from eighty. You know, I called eighty. I think it was up a little higher than seventy-seven one month and it dropped. But it's one of those things we don't like to do, but I think to keep it going. And where I was headed is we have this conversation, I think, every budget year, so it's a little early right now. But it's still, those that use our system can outperform the private sector haulers. You know, we, even at three dollars, that would cost me and my household twelve dollars a month versus thirty-seven fifty or forty, let's call it, you know. So we're still far less, and it is helping our other funds by getting a cash flow against, like I tell folks at the board, if we did go out of the garbage business, we'd have to take that twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollar number we have in in the men's pay and benefits and switch it over to general fund, which would mean a two percent tax increase just to stay where we are and have no garbage pickup. You know, so to me, I haven't been able to convince myself that makes any sense, so. And we did have some five-year runs printed where we could see. And we do see a trend downward where garbage was, I looked when I used to do the spreadsheet and report in on that. We used to do about six thousand dollars a month in tag sales. And it's nothing that we're doing wrong. It's just I think the public likes to buy the big bin and the robot arm of the truck lifts it and kind of you roll it out. You don't have to do all the separation and then bagging that we do. But I kind of think making garbage a little harder to throw out is a good thing. You know, if you make it too easy, tonnage goes up and people don't concentrate on it. Whereas our page you throw program is good. So that's the background and some financials. I think I was a busy person and did another.
Is that going to be enough though to keep us in the black?
Well.
Those those six or seven years that we looked at as far as what we budgeted and where we actually came, we've been over budget. Last year was a big one.
I think it's enough to try to bring back the do-to-do-from. But I think the other question is more, what do we move it to? If we have to move it to something else, looking at, you know, can we remarket our program and get it out? But yeah, I think we're holding out a certain piece of our population that knows it and works with it. When I ask people why to switch, they, well, it's just so much easier. They throw everything in a big bin and drag it out and they don't care what's in it, what it weighs, it just goes, you know. Whereas with our tags, the guys can only manually lift so much and we, that's why we have a weight constraint. But it also to me makes sense. It keeps people a little more conscious of what they're throwing out. But to answer your question, the other option, what I'm liking about moving it now is we can start nibbling away at that do-to-do-from number. If we studied it and said we had to go to, say, four dollars, you know, I'm not saying what the number is, but something else. It might be, I almost rather have some money coming in eating back on the do-to-do-from. And then in our budget, our normal budget sequence, we could look at what, um, do we have to take it somewhere else or not? I mean, I'm sure some people might recommend killing the program, you know, who knows? But it's, I don't think that's for tonight. I think it's more of a sit down and study a lot of numbers and things. This is more look at what we've got, what we're facing right now and how do we claw back some of that money we lent over. Doesn't really totally answer what you're posing, but it's.
I'm just curious because it's been kind of an ongoing.
Because we got that run Friday with the five-year history. Quite frankly, we haven't had time to really look at it, although you can see trends. But, you know, what number do you pick? And there is a point too where you don't want to push all your customers off. But I still think it's, we're so much more affordable that some of you have to push that out to people more. How we sell tags, we think we're pretty easily bought now with this health food store selling a lot on weekends. But anyway. What I put together was a resolution, and I know you don't have this one because I wrote it at about five o'clock. So I'll put on the screen, we'll number it, one, B thirty-two, I guess. Increase page you throw tag rates. And whereas the Village of Red Hook has been operating its municipal household garbage and recycling system to provide residents with a cost-effective and beneficial service. Whereas the current budget for twenty eighteen dash nineteen was based on known and projected costs in early twenty eighteen, but could not anticipate the global change in recycling options and costs. Whereas the village costs have increased from zero dollars per ton to eighty. I could probably round that to what you'd like, seventy-seven, ten. Make it. Due to changes in the market for recycled materials and the method used to handle them at Oster County Resource Recovery Agency, and this charge has depleted cash flow in the garbage fund. Whereas the service is still competitive and needed by residents and helps offset costs in general fund. Therefore, be resolved, I have a couple blanks here, that the village will increase tag prices from two seventy-five to three dollars and five fifty to six dollars effective. And that, I thought we'd talk about it as a group too. Yeah, I'd rather get it as soon as we could. But we've told everybody twelve thirty-one is when we're switching to co-mingled. Our newsletter goes out late December. We probably don't have a great way to get everybody aware until the newsletter goes that it's changing. But if we got somewhereed out, I think we might get a cash flow burst of people trying to buy it. Two seventy-five now to beat the three dollar, which would help us. It'd be.
I would.
So if we make it effective January one, it might be, we might get that burst of buyers picking up about, you know, a surge of purchases.
I'm kind of, you know, I I have the same wonder that Brent does that, uh, is this enough, you know? It's, I mean, otherwise we're going to have to do this again in six months and say, wow, we missed it, you know, so.
Well, yeah, like I said, I'm dividing in, I'm thinking mainly of the do-to-do-from that has to be.
Right. I mean, in a perfect world, our recycling is going to go back down to zero.
Dollars, yeah.
Or zero charge.
With the co-mingled and the separating of material?
Yeah.
Right.
You think, you anticipate it going down?
She means crosswise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a feeling January and February, people are still going to put out single stream recycling and that we're still going to get charged in January and February. But once people get it, because are they, are they gonna, so say January fourth, I, or whatever, I put out single stream, is the garbage people just not going to pick it up at all? If I put out, you know, my cans and my newspaper and my cardboard, they're just not going to pick it up. Okay.
Does she shake her head?
Okay.
I heard something come from over there.
Well, I'm good, but yeah.
No, they can't because they'll get, we'll get fined at the scale.
Right.
Because they inspect the loads.
Okay.
I think on the bigger question that's been raised on that and if we graft, sales are definitely over the years going down. And will they keep trending or they, have they hit a point? I have a feeling they hit a point that committed users are going to stay with us. For some reason, when new people move in, either they don't know about us or somehow they get advised to use, they don't know that we offer the service and.
Do most municipalities not have garbage, like, like, so people moving into the area, are they coming from a Welsh background anyway and they're not used to their municipality picking up garbage? Are we, are we a rarity? We don't have a sewer, but we pick up garbage, so it balances that?
I know Kingston picks up garbage, Tivoli picks up garbage. Rhinebeck went out of the garbage business. You know, to think of, but I think it's half and half. It's more rural folks.
Is Tivoli having a similar problem with their garbage numbers going down and losing to private haulers? Or we don't know?
I haven't heard.
I don't know.
I think another factor is that, you know, larger families generating more trash will tend to go with the private haulers as opposed to the village program.
Just because it's easier.
And because, you know, I think there's a threshold when you're generating a certain volume of trash that it, you know, it's cheaper that way.
That's a plan like the family I was asking, they have three kids. So they probably say, kid, take out the garbage and boom, it goes in the big bin and. But then, but I mean, up and down the board, I think, one, two, three, I think four of us use our system. And it is very good at reducing what you throw out.
And we all do. We all do.
Did you join too? I wasn't sure. Okay, good.
Ever since I've been in the village.
His feelings were hurt over here.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure, so I didn't want to say. So five out of five here. But Jen, again, I think we could better analyze that when we're sitting in full budget mode, but.
It'd be kind of nice. I think that your point about, you know, helping general fund pay some of the the bills, you know, especially for labor and some of the equipment costs, you know, that has to be looked at if we were to, you know, what if we were to roll it into general fund and, you know, how could we best accommodate that? But with still keeping under the two percent tax cap, if that's doable. So it's, it's going to be a lot of work just to look at that alternative. But I think at some point, we're going to, I think it's going to be necessary at least to investigate it and see what the alternatives are. Just the case, if the trends keep tracking negative.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a couple of options would be charge less of the men's current allocation from garbage to general, but. But right now, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is a mid-year, I'll call it crisis. You know, it's twenty-five hundred bucks, thousands, like a little bit of money to some people, but to us, it's a fair amount in the garbage world. So, so I don't know.
So this will buy us some time, basically?
Yeah, I think, yeah. And then we'll go into budget cycle, what, late January, February, where we start talking. And I do think what you all raise is the bigger question, you know, what's, what's the trend? What's, what do we do? But I hate to pick a bigger number right now. You know, it's like, and I don't know if a bigger number, I know this one should knock back the hit to the do-to-do-from step we took, but it won't really bring back, it might not bring it to where we want to be in the end, but.
Because also the private haulers are being forced to raise their their rates, you know, but it may minimize the amount of people leaving our service for private haulers. So if we can still remain competitive, that would be good.
I mean, that remains to be seen. So I mean, I think a lot of things are in flux right now.
So I read the resolution thirty-two would be the number, is that a call from what Cindy told us? I'm not sure where the vote will come out, but I would say effective one-one in the hope of getting a. The boost. Is how I would craft it.
I can put it in the paper too.
But let everybody know it's, it's an unplanned, we don't like to do this. It's a.
Well, I think when we raised it in July twenty seventeen, I think that was the first time we had raised it in six or seven years, so.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to, you know, repay the general fund.
Yeah, yeah, we technically have to.
That's something we've been working hard to maintain and improve.
Yeah, and I asked our financial people, it's, what Brent said is absolutely true. And essentially, you have to repay it. You can't, it's not like, you know, other things we vote to deplete fund balance intentionally to buy a truck. Remember, we did certain steps. But this one, it's, since it's a separate fund, it's really not a general fund, fund balance item. We have to. But anyway, a lot of time on it, but essentially, we'd be moving it to three bucks and six bucks effective one-one twenty nineteen to make up for an unplanned shortfall. I would offer it as a motion. And is there a second?
Second.
Any other talks? I would call it to vote. Is this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I think, thank you for your discussion and your input. Thank you. Let's see, we did CIT, we did materials management, fire company. We handed out something, an interesting bar graph and it's, an update. Jay and I have been meeting with them and I went to a recent meeting, as we all know, they're working with the town now in their contract cycle. And they're in negotiations. The town has a meeting tomorrow night. And and then the town has to have a public hearing for signing the contract and so forth. So it's not done. But one thing that came out that I wanted our board to think about with regard to budgeting and things coming in the future, what's nice, the fire company gave us some projections and they have a seventeen-year-old ladder truck, which they're saying by twenty twenty-one they'll have to have replaced. So one of their members had some pretty good spreadsheet skills and gave this bar graph for everybody. If you look, and then there's a second page where he graphs their current budget, which is the flat red line for capital expenses. And then if they buy this ladder truck, what happens? It's color-coded for the board to look at. I think I might be able to get something for the audience out there to keep Mr. George alert and, uh, depending the people interested. Let me just find it here.
There's a quick question while you're flipping through that. Maybe Jay can answer. But what is, what is the life expectancy of one of those trucks? Is it based on mileage? Is it based on age?
It seems to stick in my mind. I think they, and it's not something that they mandate. I think it's given to them that twenty years is, is the length of time that they can keep it in service without getting some sort of diminished.
Yeah, Jay has it right on. It's, um, from sitting with them, there's an insurance rating agency called ISO, ISO Insurance Services Office. And what that does, it looks at the capabilities of a fire company, equipment-wise, volunteer versus paid, hydrant locations, and it's one of the drivers when you buy your homeowner's insurance, what it costs per thousand to insure your house. And if you buy a business insurance, same thing. So the stronger the fire company as far as equipment and manpower and professionalism and different things, the better insurance rate you get. And it came up once Jay and I were, one of our negotiation sessions four, six years ago, we talked about it a bit. It's, it's one good reason to have good equipment. Because when you look around, other munis have older equipment, but Jay's right. Twenty years is what the ISO rating wants you to stay within. And this one is seventeen years old.
It is not based on, on usage or mileage or?
No, that rule is just years and.
It could go on the road like three miles a week for twenty years and they would still tell them that they need to recycle it through.
Which, interesting point, because let's say a ladder truck in New York City is going to get beat up and used twenty hours a day probably, you know, whereas here, you know, knock on woods, doesn't have to roll that off. And but it's a big number. It's a one-point-five million dollar number. So they're trying to find whatever alternate funding sources they can. But even if they find a couple three hundred thousand dollars, it's something we all have to think about. Like, it's an expense, it's way bigger. When we buy a truck, what was ours, one eighty-eight, I think our truck was. You know, we spend that kind of money, that's big to us.
Yeah, but we had, we had revenue sources and.
No, I agree. And with, so it's just, I'm really not commenting on too much. It's just something like, and I explained to them, like, that's huge for us, you know. If you look at this one graph, I don't think I had this one scanned. It's in your packets. It's essentially, they'd be wanting, in the early years, another hundred fifty thousand dollars in cash flow. And then it would drop down over a couple of years, but it's still averaging about two hundred plus thousand more per year. And there's only two real payers to them, us and the town of Red Hook. They're wondering if we could help get a commitment from Bard. And I mentioned that I've seen some writings from the conference of mayors where, um, is there a way for property tax to be redesigned? Where not-for-profits pay some sort of fee for services they receive? It would take the state legislature to pass that, but it's probably worth looking at that again and, because it makes sense.
It'd be not-for-profits or taxing them properties.
Um, I'm using word, probably the same, I'm using one word, but. And, um, but it's, it's nothing to hang out. And I explained to them, you know, we still live in tax cap world. So it's hard for any muni, us or a town, to move that much more new money. It's just, but the positive side was, at least we're talking, you know, we were, a couple of times at contract time, we were getting a little bit blindsided and at least this way we're, they hear us, we hear them. And it was good. They did also turn in their, uh, it's one of my packets there, audit report for the year twenty seventeen, which we are entitled to by the contract. So we got that, Jay. It does show that their cash on hand has dropped to three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. And they've got. And they've got long-term investments, which must be some CDs or something more long-term than cash on hand. Uh, roughly seventy-five thousand, so. About four-hundred-fifty thousand dollars. And oftentimes, we remind them that our fund balance is about three-sixty-nine right now, so essentially they have more fund balance than we have right now, so.
And you covered it, covered it asleep.
Yeah, right, and, um, and so, but like I said, overall, it was a good meeting, I think the town right now is under a little more pressure, cause they've gotta come up, their contract comes up now, but.
The the fire company, I mean, we.
Pardon me?
We talk about rotation plans, which we have not implemented, the schools talk about, and they actually implement rotation plans for their vehicles, is this part, or this, it's like the first time I've seen all this equipment that's gonna be new, new, new. New rescue, new chief, new tanker. New ladder, you know, these are all coming up and. You know, it's spread out over ten years, but twenty, ten years, yeah, um, it's a lot of money, a lot of new vehicles.
Yeah, it's expensive and, um.
All happening at once, so if these are all twenty-year life cycles, they're probably very by vehicle or?
Um, I'm I'm not positive about like the ambulance and other things, I know that there are life cycles on on turnout equipment and and air packs and things like that, I don't know if they're all twenty years, I would be surprised if if the turnout gear was a twenty-year turnaround, cause it gets a lot harder.
Cause you're you're right, Ed, you know, and I look at some of that neighboring municipalities with their vehicles, they're very old. And they're still serviceable and.
We did discuss, I think we discussed the fact that, was it Ryanbag, maybe, I'm not sure if it's Hillside or one of those other uh, that had some equipment that was, uh, aging out and there there were other ladder trucks that weren't as effective as what they're looking to get, you know, so there was a a different mix. I have to say that when they dropped the the number, room kinda got quiet.
Yeah, it's, and that's one reason I wanted to bring it up, and what I told them is we wanna have the best emergency services we can have, whether it be PD or FDE or even highway, but. There's certain constraints, we have two thousand souls, the town has ten thousand souls, and how many of them are tax-paying entities? It was, when you talk about a million and a half dollars for something, that's.
Well, I think it was pretty clear, I mean, they brought it up and I I think you probably said, well, we don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
That was our whole fiscal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they tend, they they wanna borrow, they do fifteen-year fifteen-year borrow. So they have the last five years where it's free and clear and you can use it for a down payment or sale. That's one question we had too, is like, what can you sell the current one for, or where do they go? But the good news is they're thinking and showing and illustrating and communicating to us, so. We don't feel like we're hearing about the last moment. Contract info and update, so. Yeah, we did, as far as contract info, we have bought them, the, uh, the state passed that new law for the cancer coverage for, um, interior firefighters. And we got a premium through our safety group, we buy our volunteer fireman benefit law coverage with, which is essentially workers' comp type coverages. So the fire company did get us to count, there's, uh, fifteen interior certified firefighters and, um, the premium is about a hundred thirty-seven dollars per per firefighter, so it's what, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred bucks, plus or minus.
And it's enforced five years after they leave the department.
Yeah, there's some five-year pieces of it, and then I talked to the town supervisor today, what we wanted is modify the town contract to reflect as they contribute toward Lo Sap and toward the VFBO, they would contribute to that to the same percentage, so we have to insert a paragraph in the new contract, and that'd be the town contract with us. The town also contracted Tivoli for some north border, like Columbia County border coverage up there, so. I haven't heard what Tivoli is looking for from the town. Anyway, let's see, court audit staffing. Part of this, I'd like to do an executive session, but part of it's certainly public, um, we did get from a CPA, the court audit, which we've been talking about as a board, and we were trying to get from the court a, um, a docket, we'll call it, you know, how many cases are open and pending, and, uh, I did get that too recently. We had to remind everybody what we're looking for, but I did get it. But it goes to, you know, right now, we've no longer have our second person in the court support admin office there. And, um, I think as a board, we need to look at designing, redesigning what we wanna look like in the court, the other part of it is, um, with the election of Jeff Martin to a county court judge position, he has to resign his town court justice position. And he was acting judge for us, which meant, we didn't ever really use him much, but he would back up Jonah if Jonah had a conflict or was out of town, Jonah does an excellent job as a rule, if he knows he's gonna be away, he seems to know six months before he's gonna be away, so he reschedules court, so we've never really had to activate the backup judge too often. Um, maybe once in a while for a night arraignment or something, but, um. It's, uh. We, I did get some resumes, it's, believe it or not, it seems like a hot commodity being the acting judge in the village of Red Hook. Um, but I thought we'd talk about that in executive session, just since there's some personnel, personal type info there. But I could take that into executive session with us, the other thing I threw on there, tower generator status, we had, um, some conversations at other meetings and some workshop meetings where over at our Tower Street Elevated Tank, we have eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue that comes in from cell tower tenants up there. And some new federal rules are forcing them to have backup generators themselves. We prefer not to have multiple generators, so we're looking at having one generator serve most of the tenants. Unfortunately, Verizon already has a generator there in their own shed, which is their own property. So we did have our tower consultant talking to CT Mail, and they have drawn up some specs. Um, we would have to buy the generator, the the tasking and the ideas we kicked around in the, um, workshop was that we would buy the generator, the tenants would chip in immediately to reimburse our purchase cost, but then we'd have to build the slab and then have them hook up their unique power connections from the generator to their little sheds. Overall, it's very complicated, but everybody's working on it and, um. But we don't have the final plan or anything to go to bid with yet, but it's, uh. I don't know if anybody has an interest in babysitting that project particularly, it's sort of a, um. A lot of detail, I think, it's, would you be interested?
I'm kinda going through it in another municipality, there's a tower that's looking for co-location. And they're making that move for the other three people that are there and the uh, the slab with the secondary containment is being designed at this point, so if you want me to.
That'd be good, cause it it kinda falls into some of your professional skill set too, it's, it's, um. I've seen some of the early sketches and nomenclature, it's like, you know, it's like, you need engineering and that kind of stuff.
I'll get some contact.
I'll forward you something then, okay, good, thank you, Jay. Then I added a handwritten note, LED lights, Charlie started ahead there, um, I think it's from something we emailed around today. Last Friday, a subcontractor, Central Hudson, came in, they're trying to promote interior LED lights now. Not the streetlight issue, you know, or the project, but this, and, so he roamed around this building in our old highway garage. And he came up with some numbers, I I think I'll put them up here, they were a little puzzling to me. Bear with me a second here.
And who uses that garage?
Pardon me?
The police store, we use some stuff in there.
Well, I think Highway Boy is roaming it out more than we think.
Are the lights on at night, do we use?
No, they shouldn't, shouldn't be at night, but, I would say not at night, but, let me just make sure I got the right one here, let's see. Hold on a second, let's see. He called this one our offices, but what I couldn't figure out, as you know, this is relatively state-of-the-art, since it's only ten or twelve years old, whatever Cindy said there, so is it a T-eight type of connection, maybe somebody knows that, the fluorescents where they clip in, we have the. Well, in the other rooms, we have a more, pretty highly efficient fluorescent system, apparently they would just change it to LEDs. But what I can't figure out, he gives us a light count, I know I had them in my head, they're down here, this is the schedule of all our lights. What happened here, boy, let's see. Well, do you have it? Do you have the printed versions there? I don't know. How about we take a two-minute camera break, I'm gonna go touch my projector and see what's up, turn it off for a second. All right, try one more time, camera, are you ready? So anyway, what I was showing you is, he gives the nice projections of savings first, which is smarter than, it's a contractor to Central Hudson. But what I couldn't figure out, that one thing will clear in a minute, here's the list of all the fixtures we have in the building, and he picks up some of the exterior ones too, that shine on our flag display and our front of office building display. I think there's like sixty or seventy individual lights, if I added, I added all these quantity lines here. But he says it would cost fourteen thousand dollars, let me see if I can find it here, to do it. There's an incentive of twenty-one percent, cost is eleven thousand. And, um, but I'm like, you're not changing out the fixtures, meaning.
Just changing light bulbs.
Yeah, and.
How many light bulbs is this?
I think so too, it's like, quantity, let's see. If we just do a fast, eleven plus is fourteen, and twenty-four is, uh, thirty-eight. Forty-eight, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-eight, sixty-four, sixty-nine, seventy-two.
This is all in our building?
Yeah.
We have that many light bulbs in this building?
Oh, yeah, it is, well, you know.
There was a reference in there, Ed, to, uh, changing some of these fixtures, I thought I saw to dimmable fixtures, and so you're talking about. I mean, that's more than just replacing the light bulb.
Yeah.
That's an average of a hundred eighty, two hundred bucks a pop.
Do you do the math? Yeah, cause.
Just, I mean, quick.
Yeah. When I read it, I was like, what, fourteen thousand? You know, Jen.
Fourteen thousand and seventy, you know, so.
We were laughing when Jen read her recycling report, we took four bulbs. But Ultra County Resource Recovery does accept fluorescent bulbs, so it's not like we need to pay a lot of money to. So that's seventy-two bucks, so anyway, unless, um, I guess I just got this like five o'clock Friday from the guy and he, I told him he would try to talk about the board meeting tonight, but.
So under their own calculations, it would take us, I don't know, seven, eight years to.
Yeah, to pay it back.
And we're gonna probably replace the light bulbs by that time.
Oh, no, these new LED fixtures will last forever.
Yeah, so anyway, at first blush, I don't want to get too excited about it, but, uh, we, I I did circulate, I think it all went onto digitally, so. When you.
Seems pretty expensive.
Yeah, he did the same thing for the highway garage, but like Brent said, we don't tend to have them too active over there, and that, that was a similar number, I think it might even more, let's see. Yeah, a little bit less, twelve thousand, but almost the same number. So I think I'll, I'll tell them. I'll tell them, from what we see at first blush, doesn't make much sense. If you guys wanna read over, maybe maybe we're missing something at first review, but that was the news that I added to it here, why don't we, um.
These are just light bulbs.
What's that?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, how long a report is this about light bulbs?
The guy was here a cou- couple hours, right, walking around? Yeah, that that's the address for the old highway garage that he's got here. I saw fires lane two somewhere, but it's not the fire. Cause we did ask him to try to get into the firehouse, did you see it somewhere, let's see. Waterworks says here. But anyway, it doesn't. Doesn't look like a huge apparent money saver to me. And it's not like we're struggling with ancient stuff in this building, it's pretty efficient. Anyway, folks, we hit the regular business, usually we ask the board any of the general business that we didn't hit that wants to be talked about. I think we got everything, I would like, it's eight twenty-five, if we could jump into executive session briefly. We will come back out, Panda, and we might vote on something.
George, if you must, to talk.
Oh, no, no, I. No, that's right, I'll head for you next, um. We're not gonna disappear, but let's do public comment, and I'll repeat your question if it's.
You can repeat.
Okay.
Uh, on the fire trucks, the reason that we have, we have cooking ladder, because the barn. Barn should at least pay half a million on that. Might open that, cause that's what it's there for.
Anything else?
As far as the trucks going, what you got in there, you got cars, automatic, or motor cars only have to, uh, manufacture, only have to make parts for ten years. When you got a twenty-five year on a truck, they're not built by one company. And you got electronics in them, which just die if for a certain amount of time, so you like them on your cars and check engine, same thing on these things. They got computers, they got hydraulics and pumps, and all the different companies make them, and a lot of times the parts aren't available. So you have a lot of downtime.
Okay, let me paraphrase, this is Ed talking, relaying a question from Mr. George Beacon. Uh, one was with regard to the large fire truck, ladder truck need for the fire company. The question is, who uses it, and whether primary uses Bard, according to George, and it's interesting, George, at the meeting, I asked a related question, I said, where is it needed, you know, what, cause one does think of the large buildings at Bard. And they said, one area is the village center with some of the three-story stuff here, and they said, out in the town, I'll call them the McMansions, where, um. I'm not sure why I'm talking into this microphone, I could probably talk into it, um, it's, um. The houses we saw built after two thousand one, when a lot of the five and six thousand square foot houses got built, they've got very tall elevations and really steep pitch roofs and com- complex roofs, and they feel that they need, those are the three big need areas. Our four corners, the town, large scale.
Did he not mention the seniors at some point, that occasionally, you know, because there's a three-story building there as well?
Yeah, that didn't come up at the meeting I had the other night, but it's a good point, Jay, so. But your point is well-taken, it's, you know, where does, where does it work?
They have a fire department of their own.
Oh, yeah. Then George had a kind of a follow-up from his expertise as a retired DMV guy. Vehicles in general, whether it's a private passenger automobile, certain components just don't get manufactured after a vehicle gets to a certain age. And that did get mentioned a little bit with regard to the trucks, um. There's modules and different things that, and they are, essentially they're custom-built vehicles, it's like, uh, there's not too many, you don't go to the auto dealership and buy a fire truck, you know, it's somebody.
The fire company expects it out.
Yeah, it's like eighteen-month build, I think, it's like building a yacht.
Little oxygen, that and type bark, they service them, they can tell you what kind of aggravation you get with A. But the lifespan is on them and stuff like that.
George, you named the company, what was that company?
Nichols.
Nichols, okay. He's.
Seven-nine G?
But anyway, George's comments were with regard to the fire truck and different logistics he knows about. So thank you, George, I would ask that we go to executive session to discuss matters regarding employment of a particular person, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We'll be back in not too long, the board is coming out of executive session, it's a little bit before nine, five to nine or so. We'll be back in not too long, the board is coming out of executive session, it's a little bit before nine, five to nine or so. Is there a motion to resume, to close executive, resume regular session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second on this, please?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll wrap up the evening, um, what we had was, um, we're, one other piece of business we need to do is, there's an annual requirement from the Office of Court Administration at the Village Board, get an audit of the operations of the Village Justice Court, we did get the financials from CPA Laura Doty, and we did get a docket confirmation from the court, so we can view operational numbers and closing rates and so forth in there, so we do have the two things the board was looking for now, so I would move that the treasurer, clerk treasurer, do the necessary step to get those reports up to the Office of Court Administration as required, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have the vouchers circulating around, um, if you all have had a chance to look, and uh, in regard with that, I would move that we pay bills after the appropriate audit, is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, on favor?
Aye.
And then Mr. Brent, are you ready to send us home?
Sure am, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second it, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everybody.